Hello and welcome, we're back for another round. Just want to say thank you for joining us, I hope you've enjoyed our journey these last few weeks. As we got to dive into the book of Tobit and the epic adventure. Such a beautiful story and as the word of God is so timeless. So very relevant to 2020 in America. So anyways, thank you for joining us, I hope it's been a blessing so far. And I'm terribly excited for the new book will be beginning today, the book of Judith. Hope and pray you're well, hope and pray that in the midst of the wild, the wildness that is life right now. That as crazy as the storm might get, it's the opportunity to plant our roots ever deeper and to cling more closely to our God. We had a special event recently here at JP2 High School. We had what we call Centurion Night of Worship and so we have been doing that in the chapel. It was beautiful, but with Corona and everything, we had to change things. And so last night we had our latest one, we haven't had one up since last school year. And we had it outside on the football field. And there's something so beautiful about having adoration socially distanced out on the football field. And it was just beautiful, it was beautiful to be with our Lord, it was beautiful to be together as a school community centered on Christ. It was beautiful to, yeah, in the midst of the evening with the setting sun, a spectacular sunset, the rising moon. And in some ways hopefully I think to be a beacon to the world of just the gift of our Lord and the gift of the Blessed Sacrament, the gift of the Eucharist. You know, our school situated right there on Saratoga. And so as the car has passed by to see us as a family coming to draw our strength from our God. And so it was a special evening, especially too, just because given the format, a lot of families came. And so you had a lot of parents and siblings coming together. And so it was just, yeah, very special. So we'll take it, right? We'll take those moments of grace in the midst of the journey. So let's dive in, we're gonna pray and then get started. And oh, I'm excited for Judith. So for prayer, we'll begin again with our friend Cardinal Wynn Van Toon. And last week he started a new reflection and that was discerning between God and God's works. And so we'll pick up where we left off last week. He writes, "I'd always tried to do God's will, but this light brought me a new strength that completely changed my way of thinking. Helped me to overcome moments that were almost physically impossible to overcome. At times, well-developed programs must be left incomplete. Activities begun with great enthusiasm are stalled, large missions are reduced to minor activities. I might become upset and discouraged, but I must ask myself, has the Lord called me to follow Him? Or to follow this project or that person? Let the Lord work, He will make everything turn out for the best. When I found myself in the prison of Fukon confined to a cell with windows and extremely hot weather suffocating, I felt myself gradually becoming more lifeless until I lost consciousness. At times, the light in the cells left on day and night, and other times it was always dark. It was so humid that mushrooms began to grow on my sleeping mat. In the darkness, I saw a light coming in through a crack at the bottom of the door to let water run out. So I spent 100 days on the floor, putting my nose near the crack in order to breathe. When it rained and the water level rose, little insects, spiders, millipedes, mosquitoes, etc. came in. I had no strength left to drive them away. To choose God and not God's works. God wants me here and nowhere else. When the communists threw me into the hold of the ship Haifong with another 1,500 starving and desperate prisoners to be transported north, I saw the desperation, hatred, desire for revenge on the faces of my fellow prisoners. I shared their suffering, but immediately the voice called out to me again, choose God and not the works of God. And I thought, in truth, Lord, here is my cathedral, here are the people of God you have given me to take care of. I have to be a confirmation of God's presence in the midst of these desperate miserable men. It is your will, so I choose it." And so we'll just take those words of Cardinal Wynn Van Toon to prayer with us. In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord God, we thank you for the life and the witness and example of Cardinal Wynn Van Toon. And that opportunity to, in some small sense, journey along with him. And for that reminder to choose you, God, above all things, to choose you even over and above your works. And it takes a humility, it takes a surrender. And so many times in life, it's, life's not according to our will. And that can become at times frustrating. And even when it's not in our will, even when we're desiring something good, and yet, and yet it's, it's a call to surrender, it's a call to trust, it's a call to choose you over and above all things. And so we thank you for the opportunity to work in your vineyard, whatever capacity that is, to be authentic witnesses of the gospel, to be laborers of love. And yet, as good as that is, ah, to choose you, to cling to you. And to live in that relationship in those moments, in those challenges. So hopefully we don't feel quite like Cardinal Wynn experienced, confined to that cell with the, having to put his mouth to the door for fresh air and the crack and the millipedes and the water. And yet, at times we struggle, we feel overwhelmed, we feel depressed. And so we pray, God, just this day, this hour, that we would choose you. And that everything else in life, we could just, we could bring it to the foot of the cross, we can surrender it to you and your will. As you ask us in your holy name, with the intercession of our blessed Mama, Mama Mary, as we pray. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou among women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, Mother of God, pray for us sinners now and at the hour of our death. Amen. In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen. Alright, so the journey continues, but this time in a new book, we've completed our study of Tobit. And so now we'll be looking at our second book for this fall session, and that is the book of Judith. And I love it, I love it, I love it, I love it. Such a great book. It inspires me and challenges me and it's a great story. Like, ah, I just, I have a special, I have a special love for this, for this book. But I guess again, say that about every page of scripture. But still, like, ah, I love, I love the book of Judith, it's a special story, it's a, and again, I love, I love looking at these two books together. They complement each other so well, they look on similar themes. And again, I think as we saw with the book of Tobit, something very appropriate with the book of Judith to our lives today. And what's going on in our culture. And so it'll be kind of fun to like re-pick up some of these themes we've already looked at, so looked at them anew. And there'll be a couple of things that we'll get to contrast. The, in the book of Tobit, we saw the climax being a bedroom scene. And here again, the book of Judith, we have another climatic bedroom scene moment. And it's, if you've not read the book of Judith or know the story of Judith, it is wild! And so we will, we'll definitely be contrasting that. So yeah, very, I love the book of Judith, I know I already said that, but it's a great, it's just, it's a good story. So, a quick, quick word before we dive in. And the, the, the way the story of Judith is told, it's told, you know, there's so many different ways to tell a story, right? You got a Christopher Nolan's way of telling stories, you got George Lucas, you got Michael Bay, right? Very different ways of telling stories, okay? And so the story of Judith, okay, artistically speaking, okay? Is a story where the narrator's kind of slowly drawing us in, right? It hasn't, there's the movies where like, from the moment the cameras roll, you're like on the edge of your seat and it's wild, right? And boom, like there it is, you know, are immediately introduced to the main character and it's this epic life and death situation and like, it takes off from there, right? So there's so many different ways to tell a story. But the narrator of Judith, as we're gonna see, takes a different approach, okay? It's gonna be, it's gonna be dynamic, it's gonna be engaging, right? But he's, but he slow plays it, right? And there's, there's a steady building, a steady crescendoing, growing, rising action. We were in a high school English class. And so that, and then also too, the narrator's sneaky in the sense of, we don't, we're not, it's, there's a lot of irony, but there's, we're not, we're not introduced to Judith until, until a good ways into the, into the book. And so, and again, it's a good story, it adds for dramatic effect, okay? And so I go about saying that because tonight, you know, we're gonna, today we're gonna cover several chapters in Judith. And spoiler, we're not gonna, today's class, we're not gonna even get to look at Judith herself. And we are barely gonna even see how this relates to the Israelites. And so, but again, like as we journey through the book, it's, I think, part of the, you know, the genius of the story, right? Where the narrator draws us in and steadily, 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 steadily increases the tension and the conflict. And the stakes are raised ever higher, right? And then potentially the main character is gonna come in at that decisive moment. So just a heads up, okay? So what is the story of Judith? Let's, let's dive in. Judith, chapter one. "Arphaxad fortifies Ekpatana, chapter one, verse one. "In the twelfth year of the reign of Nebuchadnezzar, who ruled over the Assyrians in the great city of Nineveh, "in the days of Arphaxad, who ruled over the Medes and Ekpatana. "He is the king who built walls about Ekpatana with hewn stones, three cubits thick, six cubits long. "He made the walls seventy cubits high and fifty cubits wide. "At the gates, he built towers, a hundred cubits high and sixty cubits wide foundation. "And he made its gates, which were seventy cubits high and forty cubits high, so his armies could march out in force, "and his armory formed their ranks. "It was in those days that King Nebuchadnezzar made war against King Arphaxad "in the great plain which is on the borders of Regae. "He was joined by all the people of the hill country, and all those who lived along, the Euphrates and the Tigris, "and the Hadastes, and in the plain where Ariak ruled, the Almyans. "Many nations joined the forces of the Chalians." Verse seven, "The Nebuchadnezzar, king of the Assyrians, sent to all who lived in Persia, "to all who lived in the west, those who lived in Cilicia and Damascus and Lebanon and Antibenan, "and all who lived along the seacoast, and those among the nations of Carmel and Gilia, Upper Galilee, "and the great plain of Ezrelon, all who were in Samaria and surrounding towns, and beyond the Jordan, "as far as Jerusalem and Bethany and Chelis and Kadesh, and the river of Egypt, "and the Tephanes, Ramses, and the whole land of Goshen, even beyond Tanis and Memphis, "all who lived in Egypt, as far as the borders of Ethiopia. "But all who lived in the whole region disregarded the orders of Nebuchadnezzar, king of the Assyrians, "and refused to join him in the war, for they were not afraid of him, but looked upon him as only one man. "And they sent back his messengers, empty-handed and shamefaced." Alright, so we are, we opened up the book, we enter this story and the narrator, right? The opening scene is like a panoramic, right? Very massive, right? He's showing us something, an event going on on practically the world's, the ancient world scale. Okay, you got this guy, King Nebuchadnezzar. And he's the, he's the new kid on the block and he's like, "I'm gonna make a name for myself." And so back in the ancient world, what do you do? You got, whatever your little boy dreams of doing, "I'm gonna conquer the world," right? Nowadays, we wanna win the World Series, we wanna hit the ninth inning, two out, grand slam homerun. We wanna, we wanna so forth and so on. But no, back then, you're like, what do you dream of? Gonna conquer the world. So King Nebuchadnezzar sets out to do just that. And so he made war against King Arphaxad. And so a common military tactic of the day is he says, "Boys, let's form an alliance. "Who's with me?" Right? "Let's join forces, let's unite the clans, let's join together to form this army for world domination." So he sends out these messengers across the known world, in particular to the West. And in a sense, the entire Western world says, "Thanks, but no thanks, we're good." You're not the only dude who wants to rule the world, we're all trying to do that in our own way. And so they politely or impolitely decline and they shut the door in his face, okay? And you'll notice, okay, just kind of casually mentioned amongst all those, those names, you have the land of Galilee and Samaria, beyond the Jordan, Jerusalem, Bethany, right? And so amongst these Western nations that are invited into this plot to rule the world is the Israelites, right? And so they've been invited and they join in their neighbors in declining, okay? And again, they're a fairly commonsensical approach, we can't form an alliance with every new, new guy on the block that wants to rule the world. And by all accounts, King Nebuchadnezzar, he's not that impressive, right? There, it says in that last verse we read, "For they were not afraid of him, but looked upon him as only one man." Fair enough, okay? So again, right, the author has this opening panoramic shot. There's this new world of leaders trying to conquer the world, right? This invitation, there was this rejection, okay? What's next? Verse 12. "Then Nebuchadnezzar was very angry with this whole region, "and swore by his throne and kingdom that he would surely take revenge on the whole territory "of Cilicia and Damascus and Syria. "And they would kill by the sword all the inhabitants of the land of Moab, "and the people of Ammon, and all Judea, everyone in Egypt, as far as the coasts of the two seas. "In the seventeenth year, he led his forces against King Arphaxad, "and defeated him in battle, and overthrew the whole army of Arphaxad, "and all his cavalry, and all his chariots. "Thus he took possession of his cities and came to Ekpatana, "captured its towers, plundered its markets, and turned its beauty into shame. "He captured Arphaxad in the mountains of Regae and struck him down with hunting spears. "He utterly destroyed him to this day. "Then he returned with them to Nineveh, he and all his combined forces, a vast body of troops. "And there he and his forces rested and feasted for one hundred and twenty days." Alright, so King Nebuchadnezzar, right? He's like, he's like the classic child on the playground, right? His friends won't wanna play with him, they don't wanna join his forces. And he's like, "Fine, but you'll regret it, I remember this, right? "And not now, but later, right?" So yeah, he's not happy, right? He's been personally offended. And so, yeah, he's, he's like, "Just you wait." Okay, and so then he goes out and faces his foe and he slaughters King Arphaxad and his army, obliterates them, okay? And wipes them out and him and his troops return home, having conquered, right? The experience, the bloodlust of war, having conquered the enemy and they're feasting and they're reveling and they're reliving those glory moments of battle in which they were, they vanquished the enemy, right? And so we, the reader, right, at this point, if we were to pause the movie, okay? Be like, hmm, okay, maybe, maybe we might have a little bit of concern rising, right? It's one thing when he just, when he shows up and he doesn't seem very powerful, right? Nothing about him stands out, but then all of a sudden, he starts, he takes out the biggest bully, right? Takes him out and you're like, "Oh, I didn't see that coming." And now he's my enemy? Okay, so potentially a little concern for those, those countries in the West. And so that's chapter one, right? Reading on, chapter two, the plot thickens. "In the eighteenth year, on the twenty-second day of the first month, "there was talk in the palace of Nebuchadnezzar, king of the Assyrians, "about carrying out his revenge on the whole region, just as he said. "He called together all his officers, all his nobles, and set forth to them his secret plan. "And recounted fully with his own lips all the wickedness of the region. "And it was decided that everyone who did not obey his command should be destroyed. "And when he had finished setting forth his plan, "Nebuchadnezzar, king of the Assyrians, called Holofernes, the chief general of his army, second only to himself, "and said to him, 'Thus says the great king, the lord of the whole earth. "When you leave my presence, take with you men, competent in their strength, "to number one hundred and twenty thousand foot soldiers, twelve thousand cavalry. "Go and attack the whole west country, because they disobeyed my orders. "Tell them to prepare earth and water, for I am coming against them in my anger, "and will cover the whole face of the earth with the feet of my armies. "And will hand them over to be plundered by my troops, "till their wounded shall fill their valleys, and every brook and river shall be filled with their dead and overflow. "And I will lead them away captive to the ends of the whole earth. "You shall go and seize all their territory from me in advance. "They will yield themselves to you, and you shall hold them for me till the day of their punishment. "But if they refuse, your eye shall not spare, and shall hand them over to slaughter "and plunder throughout your whole region. "For as I live and by the power of my kingdom, what I have spoken, my hand will execute. "And you, take care not to transgress any of your sovereign's commands, "and be sure to carry them out just as ordered you, and do not delay about it.'" Dun, dun, dun. Okay, so the lovely King Nebuchadnezzar, right? Who does this guy think he is, right? So there he is hanging out at his palace and then one day he's like, "You know what? "Time for payback, right? "Ranges a dish best served cold." Alright, and so he calls his greatest general and lays it out, right? What a classic villain, right? I mean, he just oozes villainy, right? Ah, and then just his, his pretense, like who does this guy think he is? Ruler of the world, whatever, but yeah, but still, "Tell them to prepare earth and water, right? "I'm coming against them with my anger, right? "The, the, the, I will cover the whole face of the earth with the feet of my armies." Like, right, this guy just projects confidence and swag and arrogance, right? He's, yeah, he's defeated the big bully and so now he's like, "This, the rest of you, your child's play." Yeah, the, again, the imagery continues, "Their wounded shall fill their valleys, "the brook and the rivers shall be filled with their dead and overflow." Special, special kind of guy, right? And even threats his general, right? He's like, "This is the second in command," he's like, "Don't you dare violate me," right? The, verse 12 is interesting, right? "As I live, right, by the power of my kingdom, what I have spoken, my hand will execute," right? Like, again, like almost like a reference to like this divine power, like you think of God in Genesis one. God speaks and calls things into existence and that's what Nebuchadnezzar says, basically, "My word is truth, like I say this, it's gonna happen." Okay, so, this is potentially, our suspicions are quickly getting gulped. We're, this is concerning, right? This is not good for the West, amongst the West are the art, dear friends, the Israelites. This, this might be bad news, it might be terrible news. Okay, so this is, this is a bad development, but it's still a ways off, right? There's, there's a lot of distance between us and them and there's, there's some other, other countries between us and them, okay? So, you know, it sounds like he's serious, how serious is he? Will the general execute his orders, right? There's a lot of things that could happen, okay? But still, we, we're a little bit concerned, right? This guy seems fairly, fairly, fairly upset and serious about this, okay? So let's read on, verse 14. "So Holofernes left the presence of his master, "and called together all the commanders, generals, and officers of the Assyrian army, "and mustered the picked troops by divisions, as his lord had ordered them to do, "one hundred and twenty thousand of them, together with twelve thousand archers on horseback. "He organized them as a great army, as marshal for a campaign. "He collected a vast number of camels and donkeys and mules for transport, "and numerous sheep and oxen and goats for provision. "Also plenty of food for every man, huge amount of gold and silver from the royal palace. "So he set out with his whole army to go ahead of King Nebuchadnezzar, "to cover the whole face of the earth to the west with their chariots and horsemen, and picked troops of infantry. "Along with them went a mixed crowd, like a swarm of locusts, like the dust of the earth, "a multitude that could not be counted." Dun, dun. Alright, so King Holofernes says, "Sir, yes sir." And he sets about the, the easy task of obliterating the entire West, right? And so he, but he takes his, turns out he takes his job seriously, okay? And so he gathers an army like the dust of the earth, okay? And so quickly, as we're gonna read, it sounds like this guy knows what he's doing, right? They, in that earlier battle against King Arphaxad, it turns out, like they, they won for a reason, like this guy knows a little thing or two about military strategy, okay? And so, yeah, like, for, like, he stockpiles resources, that's helpful for a large campaign, okay? And then too, like, there's, there's something he said for overwhelming force, okay? It's a timeless classic military strategy. And also too, just that, that, that psychological warfare, right? If you look out your window and you see an army coming at you like the dust of the earth, it's a little, slightly intimidating, okay? Yeah, a lot of battles can be, can be won before they're ever waged just by, by that psychological warfare, that, that advantage, okay? Let's read on, verse 21. "They marched for three days from Nineveh to the plain of Bek Taleth, "and camped opposite Bek Taleth near the mountain, which is to the north of Upper Cilicia. "From there, Holofernes took his whole army, his infantry, cavalry, chariots, "and went up into the hill country, and ravaged Put and Lud, "and plundered all the people of Rassus and the Ishmaelites, who lived along the desert, south of the country of the Chalians. "Then he followed the Euphrates and passed through Mesopotamia, "destroyed all the hilltop cities along the brook Abrahn, as far as the sea. "He also seized the territory of Cilicia, killed everyone who resisted him, "and came to the southern borders of Japheth, fronting toward Arabia. "He surrounded all the midnights, burned their tents, plundered their sheepfold. "Then he went down to the plain of Damascus during the weed harvest, "and burned all their fields, and destroyed their flocks and herds, "and sacked their cities, ravaged their lands, and put to death all their young men with the edge of the sword. "So fear and terror of him fell upon all the people who lived along the seacoast, "at Sidah and Tyre, those who lived in Sur and Akina, "and all who lived in Jamnia, those who lived in Azotus and Eshalon, feared him exceedingly." Okay, and so he sets out with this great swarm. And he comes across his first enemy and he annihilates him. Next contestant, annihilates him, okay? And so one by one, he says, "Come at me." And one by one, he destroys them, okay? And so now he's got another advantage, not only does he have this massive overwhelm- And so now he's got another advantage, not only does he have this massive overwhelming army. The strength in numbers, but two, he has the advantage of a victory. And another victory and another victory, okay? And so that's, one, you're, you're gonna put forth resistance, like you, you're gonna want some stopgaps and that's failing. And two, you're, you're starting to wonder what you could possibly do, um, to defeat this guy. And so that, the, the, that, that, that fear, that they fear him exceedingly, that, that can have. Powerful consequences. Alright, that, 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 um, so, it, it demands this question, so, so one, right? Have they got to the Israelites yet? No, but the, it sounds like they're getting closer and that's concerning, okay? And then two, whoa, what are our options, okay? Um, and are, are any of them good? So let's see what happens. Uh, chapter three, verse one. So they sent messengers to sue for peace and they said, behold, we, the servants of Nebuchadnezzar, the great king, lie prostrate before you. Do with us whatever you will, behold, our buildings, all our land, all our wheat fields and our flocks and herds. All our sheepfold with our tents lie before you, do with them whatever you please. Our cities also and their inhabitants are your slaves, come and deal with them in any way that seems good to you. The men came to Holofernes and told them all this. Then he went down to the seacoast with his army and stationed garrisons in hilltop cities and took picked men from them as his allies. And these people and, and all in the country, round about welcome with garlands and dances and tambourines. He demolished all their shrines, cut down their sacred groves. Were given to him to destroy all the gods of the land, so that all nations should worship Nebuchadnezzar only. And all their tongues and tribes should call him as God. Then he came to the edge of Ezrelon, near Dothen, fronting the great ridge of Judea. Here he camped between Gabat and Skiphilis and remained for a whole month in order to assemble all the supplies of his army. Ah, it's go, it's going from bad to worse. So what starts to happen to these people in the West, right? They, their, their will to fight, gone, thanks but no thanks. And so they're surrendering, which is great news in the sense of, guess what, they now get to live, that's appealing. Bad news, right? They are gonna lose their wealth. And they have to abandon their form of worship. Their shrine, their shrines, their sacred groves are destroyed, they have to worship Nebuchadnezzar as God. Okay, and so, the, we're, we're headed in the direction of the Israelites and so. This is getting worse, right? Several of the enemies of Nebuchadnezzar destroyed, others sue for peace, okay? But they have to basically deny their, you know, abandon their faith, okay? And so, ah, like, what, what are our friends, the Israelites, what are our friends? Um, the Jews, what are they going to do? And so it's interesting, right? We're now all the way, we just, we just finished chapter three. And by and large, we haven't even touched on the Israelites, only by implication, right? And so again, I think it's part of the, the, the fun, the, uh, the, the story, not, not the events, like that's bad. The, the beauty of the storytelling, right, is like, we see this coming, right? And it's getting worse, and it's getting worse, but it hasn't hit yet, but, but, but like. We're, we're waiting to see, is it gonna change, what's gonna happen and they're like, no, no, it's, it's, it's still getting worse. It's, it's bad, and it's coming closer, right? And so finally in chapter four, right, and, and, uh, we're gonna get the, the view of, of the people of, of Judah, okay? What, what are they gonna choose, right? The, 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 the two things, the two tactics tried so far is fight and die. Or surrender and lose your wealth and your form of worship. Okay, do, are either of these attractive options? Nope, right? Which one's better? Which one's the right choice? What will the, what will the Jewish people choose? Let's read, chapter four. By this time, the people of Israel living in Judea heard of everything that Holofernes. The general of Nebuchadnezzar, the king of the Assyrians, had done to the nations. How he had plundered and destroyed all their temples. They were therefore very greatly terrified at his approach. And were alarmed both for Jerusalem, for the temple of the lord their god, for they only recently returned from the captivity. And all the people of Judea were newly gathered together and the sacred vessels in the altar and the temple. Having consecrated after their profanation. So they sent to every district of Samaria, to Kona and Beth Haron and Belmain and Jericho, to Chobah. And Asora and the valley of Salem. And immediately seals, seized all the high hilltops, fortified the villages on them and stored up food in preparation for war. Since their fields had recently been harvested. And Joachim, the high priest, who was in Jerusalem at the time, wrote to the people of Bethulia and Betomestaim. Which faces Ezrelon, opposite the plain near Dothen, ordering them to seize the passes up in hills. Since by then Judea could be invaded and it was easy to stop any who tried to enter. The approach was narrow, only wide enough for two minutes the most. Alright, so, um. We, we, we finally get to, to Judea. And what is their response? Again, and, and, and so on the one hand, right, it's a very human, natural response, they were greatly terrified. And they were alarmed, okay, and so, there, there's a very natural human fear. Um, but at the same time, right? They, they, I think somewhat clearly, but maybe not completely, but I think. They, they, they choose to fight and I, I, hopefully, I think it's not just because they, they like their independence, which is good. Or they like their wealth, which is nice to have, but because of their god. Cause they, that's their identity as a people, right? And, and, and so to, to deny that, like you're, you, you, you're ripping out your heart, you're ripping out your identity, you're ripping out who you are, like. How is that an acceptable solution? How is that, how is that a winning strategy? Um, and they, 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 they've just recently returned from exile, right? Verse three, they, they just recently returned from captivity. And they just come back together, they just consecrated their temple after its profanation. So like, been there, done that, no thanks. And so, epically, courageously, maybe foolishly. Um, hopefully, uh, with the faith in God, they choose, they choose war. Okay, which again, any part of what the author's done in, in this context is like. Bold move, governor, like the bold, bold move, right? This is a, this is a force to be reckoned with. Um, and you, you're, you're playing the odds and the odds are against you heavily, okay? Um, but nevertheless, at least in this initial moment, they say no, like, we're, we're going to stand up to the bully. Um, our, our god is worth it, and so, um, and so immediately, what do they do? They, 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 they're smart, like, if we're, if we're gonna fight them militarily, we've gotta make some smart military choices. So they, they seize the high ground, they fortify their cities and they stockpile, um, food and resources for war, okay? Um, which is, again, a, a smart, wise military tactic, okay? But is that, is that alone? Is, is this, are they gonna win this battle by strength of arms? Um, and so, let's read on, let's see if there's any additional preparations. Verse eight, so the Israelites did as Joachim, the high priest and the senate of the whole people of Israel in session at Jerusalem had given order. And every man of Israel cried out to God with great fervor. And they humbled themselves with much fasting. They and their wives and their children and their cattle and every resident alien hired labor and purchased slave. They all clothed themselves with sackcloth. All the men and women of Israel, their children, living at Jerusalem, prostrated themselves before the temple. And put ashes on their heads and spread out their sackcloth before the Lord. They even surrounded the altar with sackcloth and cried out in unison, praying earnestly to the God of Israel. Not to give up their infants as prey and their wives as booty. And their cities, they inherited to be destroyed, the sanctuary to be profane and desecrated to elicit this joy of the Gentiles. So the Lord heard their prayers and looked upon their affliction. People fasted many days throughout Judea and Jerusalem before the sanctuary of the Lord Almighty. And Joachim, the high priest, and all the priests who stood before the Lord and ministered to the Lord with loins, clothes, with sackcloth. Offered the continual burnt offerings and the vows of free will offerings to the people. With ashes upon their turbans, they cried out to the Lord with all their might, to look with favor upon the whole house of Israel. Right? What a, what a beautiful second half of chapter four, right? So, you know, if, if they choose to fight, right, they, they're, they're, they're smart, they're wise, like they, they, they need, they need to make. Proper military preparations and they do, okay? But there's a realistic aspect dimension to it, like that they. Their military might alone, probably not gonna win, right? And so, a, a, and, and so they, they, they run to the Lord and again, wh- why are they choosing to fight, right? I think the heart of it is because of their god, like, they want to worship him in freedom and in truth. Like that is their deepest identity and like, no, have they done the best of, of living that out? No, but, but maybe, maybe this can be an opportunity to, to remember that and, and recommit. Um, and so, and so they do it, and I, I love the way in which they do it, okay? It's, it's a, it's, it's foolhardily, right, it's, it's, it's intense, right? I mean, even their, they even make their cattle make sacrifices. Like that's when you know you're serious, like, sorry, Betsy, right, no more oats for you today. We're sack, sackcloth and ashes for you, right? Uh, like this is intense, like, like dear God, like they, like, dear God, help us, right? And, and, and you know, it's, it's interesting, right, sometimes it takes, it takes impending doom, right, to. To turn to the Lord with, with our whole heart, right? Um, and so it's, you know, like, can we relate, you know? Uh, maybe we might be ashamed or embarrassed to admit, but a lot of times it's, it's the bad, the bad times in life. Are the times in which I'm like, oh yes, dear God, help me, right? I, 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 I have nothing else to put before you, and that's stripped away, so maybe, so I, I cherish you, like. Ah, and so it's, it's sad, it's embarrassing, but sometimes like, it's when things go rough. That I turn to you and cry to you for help. And so, how does God hear and answer their prayers? You know, verse thirteen is interesting, so the Lord heard their prayers. As we saw from the book of Tobit. God hears and answers our prayers, but sometimes it's not always the way in which we want it. A lot of times that's a good thing, um, but some, sometimes it's, it's interesting. So, so God hears their prayers, what, what, what does that mean? And, and whatever way God hears their prayers, how are they, how is God gonna provide for them? Against a vastly superior army? Um, also too, I think, you know, it's in life, it's, 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 we can, uh. We can have a good initial, like, hurrah, let's stand and fight, boys, let's show them what's up. But it's different when. Couple of days pass, we experience some setbacks, some losses, the, uh, the, the, the grit of what that means. And, and what happens to our stamina, you know? Um, that, that, that whole paragraph in verse eight through fifteen, like a beautiful heartfelt turn to God, right? But, but what, will that continue? You know, I think, you know, there's something that, you know, each of us can reflect on is like. How, how consistent are we? And I, I, that, myself included, like, what's, what's one, one of my great enemies is that, right? Is that, is that, that self-discipline, that self-control, that consistency, right? So often I, I know what I need to do, but doing it and doing it consistently, that's something else. Like that, that, that's the gift of virtue, is, is making and forming that habit, right? And so it's, sometimes, you know, it's, it's interesting how crisis can, can wake us up, can call us to action, you know? I mean, that's good, right, but, but we, it's not just that initial response, but like, how about the follow-through, okay? And, and here, you know, I think that this book can be similar to, to the book of Tobit, can be a. Very applicable to us in our own lives and whatever's, you know, going on, um. So for us, right, for, for many of us, right, when, 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 as Corona hit, as, as the, as the virus hit, right? Like, it, it, it woke us up in some way, like it got our attention, right? If only from the fact that like, all the, so many basics of life changed, you know? From schools shut down to teleworking, to, to layoffs, to, um, the way it changed the way in which we, we eat out. Uh, go to bars, um, I mean, it just almost overnight, right? And it was changing so rapidly, right? And, and, and we, we, we lost, for us as Catholics, we lost the public mass. Um, and wild, right, and just like almost overnight, like. You know, if, if that didn't in some ways wake us up, then like, there's, that's his own issue, right? And so, uh, you know, I, I think there, there was a sense in which maybe, yeah, it, it, it got our attention, it woke us up, you know? And so, um, you know, and e- each of us responded differently and, and, you know, each of us had different challenges that, that, that brought about. But hopefully, um, part of our response was a, a reminder, a, a turn to God, a call to return to God. And you know, it, it, it was during length that this, this got started for us. And, and you know, we, it was wild having to celebrate Holy Week not at the church. Uh, and, you know, and, and that, that. Um, you know, that, that, that response, uh, that, 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 that challenge and that, that response. And so, you know, our, our god, our god is epic, our god is so good, he's so beautiful, right? He, he, um, he paints straight with crooked lines, he works with me. Right? And, and it's wild, right? So, God, God can, our god is epic, right? He, he took, he took us as humanity, rising up and killing him, to be the means of our salvation and redemption, you know? And so I think, uh, the same too in our own lives, like, in the midst of the pain and the suffering and amidst the hardships. Like our, our god is bigger and our, our god is more powerful. And so, I think there, there, there's an opportunity in, in, in the midst of the struggle and the suffering. Um, for our conversion, for us to remind of what's truly important. You know, a, a, as, so, many things were, were, were stripped away from us. Um, things like toilet paper became a luxury good. That, yeah, the, um, a reminder that, that even within the wealth and opulence of, of the Western world, like. Uh, uh, some of these gifts we have and these things that we take for granted. Um, and, 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 and even losing briefly the, the, the public mass, right? And so what are our priorities? What are our greatest treasures? And so, um, and so I, I love that paragraph and like, I think it's, it speaks to each of us. Um, how do we choose to respond, um, to, to, to this moment, right? And, and, and in particular, it's obviously different levels, but part of it is like in our relationship with God. And have we taken him for granted? Uh, ha, i- is he a priority, you know? And like, is our relationship with him only, only, uh, only exist in moments of crisis? And yet, as, and if that is the case, it's not a reason then not to turn to him in crisis, right? But to use this to build and to grow, right? We're now, you know, six, seven months, eight months into this, into this, right? Um, that, 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 that first, you know, that spark, that, that, that initial return to the Lord, that initial. You know, wooing and speaking to our heart to return to him, you know, here we are these months later. How have we continued? How have we persisted? Um, and, and, and how we, have we, uh, how we are, have we started to drift and lose our way again? You know, how, have we, um, and so that reminder, I think. And, and, any crisis can be that reminder of what's important, what are my priorities? What, um, what is my identity? What is my strength? What is my hope lying in, right? And for us as Catholics, right? Um, the foundation has to be in our God. And so hopefully there can be fruit from amidst the, 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 the suffering and the pain. Um, and that, that, that from, we can go from death to resurrection. So, uh, as we, as we look ahead, uh, some, so we, we ask ourselves a couple of questions. How, how, the obvious, how's that gonna work out? How's that gonna fare? How's that gonna fare? How will, how will General Holofernes and Nebuchadnezzar respond? They don't sound like two dudes who take, who take, uh, obstinance and rebellion easily. And, um, and why is the book called Judith? I kind of spoiled it at the beginning, but she's nowhere to be found, we, we barely got to the Israelites, okay? So how will they fare? Will their, uh, will this initial fervor last, right? And who's Judith? And why is the book named after her? Find out more next week, as we journey in the book of Judith. Uh, so we will pause there for today, and let's close in prayer. In the name of the Father and the Son, the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord God, we give you thanks for the, the gift of your word, the gift of sacred scripture. Um, and we pray, Lord God, as always, that your word, uh, could be a lamp to our feet and a light to our path. We pray that your word could come alive and speak to us and stir our hearts and call us to conversion. And we pray, Lord God, that today, that we could turn to you like the, the Israelites turn to you in their hour of need. Um, that we could turn to you with, with our whole hearts. Uh, we, we pray, God, for, um, just a, a, a greater intensity of love, uh, knowing that it's, it's not us who make that first move, it's you who first loved us. It's you who paid the price for our sins on the cross, it's you who died for us, it's you who created us, it's you who hold us in existence. And so, any and every act of love is but a, a response to you who first loved us. And so, just fan into flame our love for you, our, our, our yearning for you, and, and, and a conversion of heart, of repentance for our sins and the ways in which we stumbled and fall. Um, and just to, to return to you, um, with a, with a, uh, in totality, uh, with a fierceness. Um, so we ask for that grace, we ask for the outpouring of the Holy Spirit in our lives. Come, Holy Spirit, come, Holy Spirit. Um, we ask for our Blessed Mothers in recessions, we pray. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed are thou amongst women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners now and at the hour of our death, amen. In the name of the Father and the Son, the Holy Spirit, amen. Thank you so much for joining us, stay tuned for next week, right? The, the plot's only gonna thicken, the, the, uh, the conflict's gonna increase. Uh, if you've been enjoying these studies, again, I encourage you to spread the word. Um, you know, it's one of the, there's a challenge to this online, but there's a benefit, right? Um, if we, if you miss the exact hour that it's done, you know, live, well, then you missed it. But not here, right here, we can share, we can share with the friends, with relatives. Um, and again, maybe, you know, maybe there's a specific class, maybe, you know, that, that really, um, relates to someone that you know, um, since they're going on in their lives, and this would be helpful. So I encourage you to, to share, to share these, and thank you for joining us. And, uh, look forward to next week, take care and God bless.